It deals with removing her name from the agenda. You can do it now.
Okay. Says, "Hi all, I understand my name is listed on the agenda with Casey Anderson regarding preferential voting. I didn't realize my name would be put on the agenda. Iron County GOP Treasurer, Casey Anderson called me some weeks ago to say he was looking at advancing this method of balloting for municipal elections. Ask if I could speak to my experience at the county convention as I helped count the votes using that method and was very pleased at the smooth, time-efficient method it provided." I told him I would be glad to. When Casey texted me last week, he had put preferential voting on the agenda for city council this week and asked if I could be there. I replied I had some concern after speaking with county clerk about this method of balloting, some challenges in certifying the results for elections like municipal ones. I hadn't heard anything back other than his thanking me in reply, but then was notified yesterday my name was on the city council agenda. So as such, since this is public record, I do want to state that my experience in helping at the county convention using preferential voting was a highly positive one, especially so since I feel it's so respectful to honor the valuable time of those giving up a Saturday to fulfill their obligation as delegates by providing the most efficient way to vote in that setting. For those counting votes, myself included, the learning curve was short. If memory serves, there were 214 delegates there casting their vote. So it was helpful to provide results in a timely way without having to re-ballot multiple times to narrow the field of candidates. If you would like, please feel free to reach out to me anytime to ask me further about my personal experience with helping with preferential banking, balloting. Thank you, Becky Bronson." So she didn't want it officially listed that she was on the agenda.
Okay, so...
So I would make a motion that, given that we remove Becky Bronson's name from the agenda and that we, with that exception, we approve the agenda order for tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. And will you make sure you get that?
I will. I brought a copy and then I left it in my car, so...
Okay. We will now move on to council business.
I only have, I believe, one thing. I want to welcome our former mayor, Joe Burgess, here tonight. Thank you for coming back into the friendly confines of Cedar City Council chambers.
A lot of nice are sitting down here.
And acknowledge the many things that you and your wife both did for the community and the pretty beautiful Christmas decorations I know your wife had a lot to do with, as well as the ongoing work with the city. So thank you for that very much. It's duly noted. So, thank you. That's all I have here.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a statement I'd like to read.
Okay.
If you'll indulge me, please. Dear citizens of Cedar City, after careful consideration, I have decided to finish out the last year of my term on the Cedar City Council. During my primary campaign in June, I intended to relinquish my seat if elected to the county commission, but in the following months, I've been approached by an overwhelming number of constituents asking me to stay on. I am and always will be a strong fiscal conservative. Although I sometimes feel I'm a lone voice, these constituents have told me that they feel it is necessary to have such a voice and balance on the council. These requests have multiplied as those constituents saw the council make several troubling financial decisions over the last several months. These decisions, in my opinion, could potentially cost taxpayers half a million dollars. After listening to their concerns, I felt it was my duty to fulfill the promise I had made to the voters in this city to do everything I could to ensure their tax dollars are not wasted, so I reconsidered my position. In preparation for taking my seat on the county commission, I am in the process of transitioning the ownership of my business to my son. This will enable me to serve my constituents on the county commission full-time, as well as the city council in a part-time capacities before. For these reasons, I have decided to finish the job that you, the majority of voters in Cedar City, hired me to do, rather than leave it to a small handful of people to choose an unelected replacement. I promise to continue to honor the trust you have placed in me to safeguard taxpayer funds and stand up for our local businesses. I am excited to see through to completion several issues I began working on during my time on the council, issues I continue to be passionate about. I look forward to continuing to serve to the best of my ability. To ensure no one thinks I have made this decision for personal gain, I will be donating my next year's council member salary in advance tonight to the following charities in equal shares of $3,000 totaling $12,000. The Canyon Creek Women's Crisis Center, the Family Support Center, the Iron County Children's Justice Center, and the Iron County Care and Share. Thank you. And if I could ask, I couldn't, I apologize, I couldn't get ahold of the, because of time constraints, I couldn't get ahold of the Children's Justice Center representative, but I'd like to ask Maureen Einfeld, Samiko Scott, and Peggy Green, if you could come forward.
You didn't use our pretty seal up here.
No, I'm good.
You gotta do a redo.
Thank you, Mayor.
And can I get a copy of your statement as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other council comments? Just to keep you informed, the Iron County Coordinating Council, which is the mayor's from all the different towns, we met today with the representatives from the League of Cities and Towns. They flew down to meet with us to talk about all the legislative priorities that are coming up and how to better engage on local issues this year with the legislature. There's a number of new members this year, and so how to engage, how to work on local priorities that will impact all of our communities. And so as the session gets closer, we'll kind of keep you up to date with what's going on and how you can all help them be involved.
All right.
And with that, we'll move on to staff comments, starting with the chief.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and staff. We'd like to invite up Sergeant Womack and Benjamin Batty and Laura Albrecht. Give them some recognition, and I'll let Sergeant Womack take this. All right, well, as you know, this past couple of weeks, we've been fundraising for our Shop With a Cop program. I think everybody's familiar with that. We take 100-plus under privy, I can't say that word, needy kids shopping at Walmart, and we raise funds throughout the year to do that. And Ben and Laura approached me, I don't know what, a couple of months ago, and said they had this idea for a fundraiser, and it was the Jubilee of Trees. And Laura and Ben and their group, and I wish we could get everybody here, because I know it was much more than these two, but these were the front men, front women for that job. And they raised over $9,000 for our Shop With a Cop fundraiser. Now, that's a lot of money, but what that means to the police department is, we didn't have to rely on our tip-a-cop fundraisers, and we're pretty shabby waiters and waitresses. And so you never know if we're gonna raise the money each year for that. And these guys pushed us over the top and into the next year, so we just wanted to bring it to your attention, bring it to the public's attention, that these guys worked so hard for that, and just that we appreciate their efforts. And I wish I had a plaque or a certificate or something to give them, but they are so deserving of the recognition, and we just want to thank them for that. So that's why we're here.
That was a blessing. It was a gift to be able to do that. And I love the schools, I love education, so I love the way these kids are selected. I feel like the teachers really have a read on what the kids' needs are and which kids could use something extra. So that's kind of why we got behind this charity, and we got to go watch the kids do the shopping. And it was super humbling and just the neatest experience. I would really recommend, I don't know if I can flood your organization, but it was the coolest thing I've seen all year. So we are absolutely planning on doing this again.
I usually don't like to come here and talk.
I haven't noticed that to be the case.
And I will state my name's Ben Batty, but I'm here on my own accord. Is that okay? The police told me to come. I just want to say one comment, and what a wonderful, wonderful experience it was. Laura really is a wonderful lady, and she really does a lot for this community, and she really deserves all of the recognition for this. But I just want to say one thing on record. You don't realize what a great and wonderful place we live in. This truly is a wonderful city, and it is truly, 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 the people here are unbelievable. And the fact that they would get behind something that meant so much, and it was awesome to participate in. And I'm just gonna leave you on a note that hopefully will make you realize how blessed some of us are. One of the children, we were walking around, Laura and I got to stop and look in their carts, and we got to ask them questions about why they were putting things in their carts. And, you know, all the policemen said it's quite a common thing, but the one little boy had a pillow in his cart. And when we asked him why he had a pillow, he said it was because he'd never had a pillow, and he had always wanted a pillow, to some very, very simple needs. And thank you, Cedar City really is the one who deserves the round of applause.
Mayor, could we, I would really like, if you wouldn't mind, would you come up? We'd like to congratulate you and shake your hands, because this is really a remarkable thing. Is that okay? Too late for that.
Ben, this is a good thing. And your trees were beautiful.
We had 28 businesses donate them, so a lot of people got involved. It was great.
So thank you, and we're so appreciative. And I just wanted to give a plug for Sergeant Womack. This is his last year coordinating this, and he has done a remarkable job putting this together. It all lands on him. Susan Carter from the county attorney's office plays a big part in arranging the selection of the kids. But it's Sergeant Womack who's out at every tip-a-cop coordinating those events, and up early and out late. He's just been remarkable.
Pretty great for a kid from Green River.
That's right, from Green River. He's come a long way.
You could always say shop with an ex-cop.
That's true. I've tried to convince him to stay, and he just slams the door in my face, so. So thank you for your support. We appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, are there any other staff comments? Okay, we'll move on to our public agenda with our public comment portion. If there is anyone that would like to address the council. Okay, then we will move on to our business agenda with our public portion first, with item number one, public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. So I would like to open the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The purpose of the public hearing is to, mind you, this is actually what I have to read, so just bear with me, is to provide citizens with information about the CDBG program and to allow discussion, and two, let's see, to allow discussion about possible applications for the 2019 funding cycle. Grant money must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low and moderate income individuals. The Five County Association of Governments, with which Cedar City is a member, is expected to receive approximately $813,000 this year. All eligible activities are identified in the CDBG Application Policies and Procedures Manual, and anyone interested can review it at any time. Some of the eligible activities include construction of public works and facilities, water sewer lines, low-income housing, acquisition of real property, provisions of public service such as food banks or homeless shelters. In the past, Cedar City has received several grants to provide low-income housing, food pantry, food pantry and low-income housing rehabilitation. The city has handed out its capital improvement plan, indicates, as part of the regional consolidated plan, this list of projects that the city has identified as being needed in the community. If anyone has comments, questions, or suggestions, you now have the opportunity to come and address the council.
It's me again. It's that time of year. So Heidi Miller from the Cedar City Housing Authority, and we would like to possibly use CDBG funding to purchase more low-income housing. Pretty general.
You're gonna be purchasing existing homes, not building?
No. We generally purchase, not to say that we would never build, because we would if things fell into place, but usually takes far more money than what we can get on a CDBG grant, so. Any questions?
All right, thanks, Heidi. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
John Whitaker, I'm just curious what some of the prioritization, the CDBG prioritization that you've done is, like, what are the top few projects on your list? I know you've got to have that list. I'm just curious what Cedar's was.
Oh, yes. Are you talking about previous projects?
No, just the prioritization for 2019.
So the prioritization is given at the five-county level on the ranking and...
Speaking of the mic, Heidi.
Okay, so the city can submit applications for anything they want to, but they're actually prioritized by Five County Association of Governments, and that's in their rating and ranking.
Yeah. My question is, what are some of the city projects?
Right now, for CDBG monies, the city is not applying. We would submit Heidi's request with the city housing authority as our primary and sole request. Last year, I think we did...
I think we do.
No, Tern.
We did Tern.
Last year it was Tern.
Housing Authority and Tern, and the priority ended up being Tern.
So Heidi, has this already been ranked, then, by Five County Association, and are they okay with this priority ranking of purchasing the low-income homes? I mean, the homes for low-income housing?
Yeah, the money comes from HUD, so generally speaking, you go into a, so we could submit an application for anything that was, I guess even ineligible, but we would do it for something that was ineligible, an eligible activity, and then it's submitted to the Five County Association of Governments, and they rate and rank them. So we may or may not get funding at this point.
I see.
So it's like a pre-application, and they don't have enough money to fund, they generally, I think they get about three or four dollars of applications for every one dollar of funding that they have. So it's pretty competitive, and it's in all of the five-county area. So cities and counties can submit applications. So they will rate and rank them. If you make it over the first hurdle, then I will be back here for a second public hearing.
Well, Washington County is just flush with money. They don't need it, I'm sure.
Now, Washington County is out because their...
Oh, because of their population?
Enter, what are they? Enterprise zone or something? Anyway, so they're, a what? Does anybody know? I don't know. It's a word for when your population meets a certain, so theirs is backed out of it. But it's everybody else in the five-county area, all the counties and the cities, generally.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there, is there anyone else that has comments? Okay. If not, then we will close this public hearing and move to item number two, Consider Vicinity Plan Amendment for the Iron West subdivision.
Good evening. It's good to be here with you. My name is Joe Burgess, and we have a project that we're working on out on about 4500 West and Highway 56. We came in about six months ago and rezoned this property that you see up there. We have about 288 acres, and we only rezoned a portion of that. And there's some of it along the highway there is commercial, and then on the left-hand side there, there's some R3. And then the thing that we're here with for the vicinity map is where you see all the roads there. And we're gonna do this in phases, and there's two phases that we're gonna do originally, and that's about 40 lots. We've gone through the Planning Commission and got their approval to bring it to the council, and I don't know what questions you might have.
Joe, I have a question. I know that in, because it was also in the Planning Commission minutes that I read, I know that in our 2-1, open spaces or parks are not required, but would you ever consider trying to find some space in there? It seems like it's an awful lot of lots and things, and certainly on the west side of the city out there, there's not any parks. There's no places, there's no gathering places for families living there.
It is our intention, and we will be doing this, maybe not until we get into the next phase, but we plan on giving a large piece of property to the city for a park out there.
Okay, well, that helps me a little bit there, because there's a lot of homes there.
There's about 600 homes designed there, and we will be giving some to the city for a nice park out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other comments, questions? Okay, then we will move this on to our consent agenda. Good with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Item number three, Consider Vicinity Plan for Northfield Village PUD.
Good evening, council. My name is Dallas Buckner. I'm representing Go Civil. So we have a PUD on Northfield. It's 18 buildings, 66 units. There's a park in the middle, zoned R3 right now. All the other zones are around there, R3. We took it to Planning Commission, got a favorable recommendation, so.
I have a question about the street there on the, what, the southwest corner there, 1525, I think. I'm not sure what that street is. Is it planned to remain open, or is it going to be blocked off, and is this gonna be walled in?
No, so it's going to be a...
It's gotta remain open, because it provides access to other lots.
That's what I would think. That's why I was asking that question. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so it's in the southwest corner, it's gonna be a hammerhead for the turnaround. And I think that's one of the, I don't know that that's the vicinity plan that we took to Planning Commission. I think that was the first one we submitted, because it has red lines on it, but we ended up going with a hammerhead, and it'll be fenced, but there will be a gate to walk back and forth between. So it'll have that PUD fence around the hammerhead, but then there will be an access gate for people to walk back and forth.
And is this gonna be developed in phases?
So the building permits will be pulled in phases, but the plan is to do all the improvements through one construction permit.
And Fire, do we have any concerns, any issues here that you are aware of? Okay. That's all my questions.
Are there any other comments, questions? Good with this going on the consent? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, use of the Heritage Theater.
Hi, my name's Cymbria Patterson. I am the executive director for Red Acre Center. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3). I live in Iron County, but our address for the center is in Cedar City. And one of the things we do, besides school tours and advocacy, is we put on a farm conference. Hopefully you'll see these flyers soon around in the city, and this is our third year. The first year, we did it over at Southwest, which is no longer called Swatzy. We had 125 people. We grew out of that facility. We doubled our numbers, and we went to Festival Hall last year, and we've grown out of that space. We're using both Festival Hall and the Heritage Center this year, and Jason's been working with us. Next year, we'll use both of them at the same time, because the numbers keep growing. We've added food, not just, we're not just a farm conference anymore. This year, we're a farm and food conference. We have attendees that come from, last year, we had eight states represented it, represented, and we do a dinner out at the barn, and we have a mixer at Centro, and some of the sponsors are El Rey Inn, the Tourism Bureau, Scott Phillips is sponsoring us this year, Centro, Staley West, Farm Bureau, and our county sponsoring it. And we have people in the community who want us to keep it here. We'd like to keep it here, because we live here. And one of the things we'd like to add, because it's a food conference this year, is liquid food in a glass, because people associate wine and beer with food. And Jason's been working with us, but it's not the ordinance. The stipulation is that you can't have wine or beer at the Heritage Center unless it's a private event. So I'm asking you, if we can do it this year, with your permission, we would be able to. And if you say yes, the second thing that I have to come before you and ask is that we need to get a special use permit from the DABC, and you would have to grant permission for that as well. It would only be beer, and it would be a 12-ounce glass. The event, if you're interested, it'll be in the lobby of the Heritage Center, and they will have five chefs. It will be a cook-off. They'll just do a bite, and the money, we're finalizing this with Southwest tomorrow. They can either choose cash or a scholarship to their culinary program, and they'll get to go to each chef and take a bite that they prepare. And then one of those stations would be that they could also get a glass of beer, and it would be from our local, for those of you, if you don't know, the brewery that is in Policy King. They would be providing that. So, any questions?
Why only beer?
Because it's cheaper to file the bond. It's 500 instead of 1,000. It's 1,000 to do wine. So, there's the real truth.
Money talks, doesn't it?
And, well, we were also concerned, because your paperwork all says beer, so we didn't want to cross the wine. And spirits is a whole different thing.
Is that true, Tyler? Our paperwork says only beer? I know they've had wine and beer at other events.
This is Paula. She works with us.
I'm Paula Milby, and I do consulting with them and research. It's just how the ordinance reads. When you go in and you look under your single event permit, it all says beer. It says beer. I've got it right here.
Oh, I'm not arguing with you. Maybe it's something we need to update.
We didn't know whether that was just being a term, a term being used to differentiate between distilled spirits, or whether you actually intended for it to just be beer. So we went with the easy route.
Well, it was before my time, obviously, but usually with food, you associate a glass of wine rather than a beer, unless it's brats, you know?
True, but...
But we have a local brewery, so we thought, we were trying to do wine over at the barn. And the county has been very good to work with for the special events permit, I might add.
So you're saying we haven't been good to work with?
I didn't. I was just merely throwing a compliment out to them. I haven't even started with you guys yet. Jason's been great, and you've been great, Scott, so.
Jason, do you have any thing to add?
Jason Clark, manager, Heritage Theater Festival Hall. This policy was established in August of 2002, and we've just, we've gone by it. We've explained if it's a public event, if you can walk in free or you can buy a ticket, it's a public event. You can't have alcohol. Private event, closed function. This is the first organizations that's decided to come and ask for that policy to be altered or set aside. We don't object, per se, in people doing this if they're pulling the appropriate permits and all of that. My only concern is that if we're going to make this exception, let's, let's think about what verbiage we ought to add or subtract in our policy, so this doesn't become a freewheeling, everybody coming, asking for you to have alcohol at the facility for whatever purpose. We should just be a little forward-thinking about how we want to proceed. The only thing we've ever done besides this is we've made a, I came before the council about 18 months ago and asked for a change in that policy stating that alcohol cannot be present if minors are present, even if it is a private event, because we had some issues regarding that. So once again, I'm not, per se, against this organization requesting this or pulling the permit, but before we open Pandora's box, we ought to take a look at those considerations and think it fully through. Any questions or concerns?
Well, it seems to me, and I'm not familiar, I guess, with our single event permit, as I should be, but it seems to me that we ought to, if we're going to open it up, we should say at least wine and beer, because they seem to be the beverages of choice in these kind of situations. I think if you get into the other kinds of spirits, you do run into some other issues, and I don't know if Chief Adams would like to weigh in on that. I don't know if he's even still here, but I think that's where you might have some more problems. But generally, at private functions, whether they be weddings or whether they be other things, it would be wine, it would be... it be other things, it would be wine, it would be served, or beer, but I don't think you'd be serving
The wine or beer is a non-issue to me.
Yeah.
It's just that when we, private events have generally been without issue, except for the minors issue. And we have addressed that through a policy change. But now we're talking about a public event, and how are we going to proceed going forward, asking for the special use permit? And so we ought to reexamine the policy as it was established, you know? And is it simply to come and make the request, and then you make the special use permit? Just where are we going to go with this? For one, just so myself and my fellow staff members know what the procedure is and how it's going about.
We did the beer garden approach for events a number of years ago. My recollection is we went with the beer garden because that kind of corresponded with what DABC had on the books at that time. Now, DABC's regulations tend to change a lot, so I don't know what they are today. I don't, I don't know if they're beer and wine gardens today. I just simply don't know. So if that's something the council wants us to look at, we can look at that.
Well, this council member does.
Educate ourselves on DABC stuff and get back to you.
Yeah.
I can speak to DABC because I've been working with Bonnie at the DABC. And they're pretty thorough. Their application is very clear. There's a number of different selections. You can go for a single event permit. You can go for a beer permit. You can go for a distilled spirits permit. As you go up the ladder of the content of alcohol, it becomes more expensive and it becomes more detailed. They have a list. In fact, I have a copy of the DABC application that we have completed for them. We cannot submit it until such time as we have local authority. But I, I think the DABC does a really strong job of vetting it. They require you to list what you're going to do for security, how you're going to deal with minors if they're present. They want the floor plans of the ingress and egress. So DABC is not easy to get through. So I've, we've submitted, we have actually, we've submitted, it's very hard because there's not very many of these special event permits, I guess, requested. So nobody really knows the process. So nobody was able to say, you need to come here, you need to do this, you need to get this, you need to go through these steps. So we have submitted the information to the police department, because I understand that unlike the county, who doesn't run a background check, the city runs a background check through the police, which is fine. So their information was submitted, and they, I included to them a copy of our application that we filled out for DABC and the floor plan and all of that stuff. So, but it's, it's been kind of a, an interesting experience, because DABC is very thorough about what they expect, but because I think the cities and the counties don't deal with this very much, and how people are doing it, I don't know whether they're just doing it, or whether nobody's doing it. But there's not much information anywhere, not in the ordinances, not in policies, not through the employees. So.
When is, when is the conference? When is the event?
Conference, the, what, the event that we're asking for the, the special event permit for, the event permit, single event permit, is the 3rd of January. I am supposed to have everything to Bonnie at DABC by the 19th of December. I have inquired as to whether or not I could submit the packet to her, sans the local authority from the city, because I will have it from the county for the other event. And then to forward her if they could begin to process the package. And then if I were to get the single event permit authorization, I would then scan it, send her a copy, follow with a hard.
It seems to me, in light of the time issue on this, and if the city's single event permit allows beer, that's the one we should submit, that's what we should move on, and then we should come back and look at this other issue when we have time to review it and look at it, to make any exceptions we're going to make, Jason, so we have a clear policy for you and staff.
It seems that more of your problem would come from your private events than from your public events, because like I said, DABC is very thorough. And I'm sure none of you have had time to review their applications, but they
Yes, I have.
Oh, well, you have because of what you do.
We did it at the Utah Spirit Festival.
Yeah. So you know exactly what I'm talking about. They're very thorough, and they're not, they're not flippant about issuing them. So
Right.
We would appreciate it if you could consider that. It would be extraordinarily helpful.
Thank you.
So Chief, have you had a, because on all of these, you guys run your checks and ?
Chief Adams with the police department. I haven't seen this application come through yet, so it may just be in transit. When did you complete it?
Because nobody told us the process, it got handed in this afternoon.
Okay.
We didn't know it had to go to the police.
No, that's fine.
We were bringing it tonight, but we found out that was
Okay. So yeah, we'll, we'll look at that as soon as I get it and go through that process.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that we move the, because send agenda, I mean, to the action agenda for next week.
We'll publish both, the policy issue at the theater, and then the single event permit. We'll just publish them both on the agenda for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Action.
So it's all going to go on the action agenda?
That's my motion, anyway.
You don't have to, that's just
Oh, yeah, we're not in it. We're in a work
No, yeah.
Yeah.
That's just, okay. So item number five, a public hearing to consider a general land use. Okay, so just for your information, it will come on next week. The council will have to vote both on the policy and then on whether or not to grant.
I get all of your notices from the public website.
Perfect. So we'll see you again next week.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number five, public hearing to consider a general land use amendment from Central Commercial to Business and Light Manufacturing for property located at 5200 West Highway 56.
So I don't see Mr. Yasi here. I called him, left him a voicemail reminding him of this meeting, but I'll do my best to answer your questions. If there's anything that I can't answer, I'll get in touch with him again, and hopefully he's here before, for next week's action meeting. So Mr. Yasi is the owner of, I think it's Timber
Timberhawk.
Timberhawk, Timberhawk. It's my understanding, they, he makes prefab panels for like mobile homes, I believe is what it is. So he owned a business up north. He sold that. He's moved down here and he'd like to rebuild and start again. So these three lots that you can see here that are in kind of the checkered color is the property he would like to own. The purchase of this property is subject to him going through this process. So the general plan right now is Central Commercial, and he would like to change that to Light Manufacturing. You can see the surrounding areas, I and M1. This is out kind of by Port 15 area.
What's that R1 doing in the middle of all of this?
Private owner that still has it zoned that way. Before planning commission notices were sent out to all the property owners, he only heard back from one, and that was an owner, I think, to the west that was all for it, because if it goes through, he may do the same with his property.
Can we identify, just for me, so just to the west of this map in those, in the white parcels, are those homes? What is that location there? Is that just open property?
Yeah, that's, I think it's in the county.
That's in the county?
Mm-hmm.
I guess my, my question is, because this is on the south side of 56, correct?
Yes.
Because we're just, we just are looking and moving ahead, a big vicinity plan for homes at 4500 West, and this is about 5200 West. We just, I don't know what that, I don't know what that transition space is like from homes into light industrial and manufacturing. That would be my concern as neighbors and people. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Well, it is, it is I and M across the street.
Yeah, across the street it is. Right.
And pull up the
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against the, the change. It's just that, you know, we look at our general plan and our land use, what
Can you blow that?
Where are people living and where are we building manufacturing places?
Maybe up so we can
Right there, I guess, just before you get to the wire, right?
Yeah, that's the wire right there.
But I don't know where it was exactly.
But I just, we're going to keep developing out west.
Mm.
Because that's where building is going to be done. Does anybody else have any concerns along those same lines? Or is that just not an issue? I'm not, I'm not opposed to the business at all. I'm just questioning its location and proximity to how the city develops in the future. Since he's not here, do we want to just?
Well, no matter what, it's going to go on the action agenda.
Okay.
Right.
But we will, are there any other comments from the council? And if not, let me open the public hearing on this item. If there is anyone that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none. Then we'll close the public hearing. And do you have any other questions that will go on the action agenda? And hopefully he will be here
Yeah, where he can better explain it.
Next week where he can answer questions. Should we be good with putting on the action agenda continuing?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Then this item goes exactly along with that. Item number six, public hearing to consider zone change from annex transition to industrial and manufacturing, one for property located at 15200 West Highway 56.
Same issue.
Same issue, yep.
Could you maybe send us a vicinity map out that shows what the zoning around that is that we could look at before next week?
Yeah, I'll
Because that would be helpful.
I can send you a link to, well, there's the city map that I can send you a link to, and then I can see if I can find just a specific map for that area.
Yeah, for that area.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council? Then we'll open the public hearing on this item. And seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on this item and put it on the action agenda. Okay. Item number seven, public hearing to consider amending Cedar City Ordinance 2612 to regulating where public notice is posted before considering a general land use amendment zone change.
Good evening, council and staff. Adam Hahn, sitting on the planning commission. I was made aware through constituents or the public coming and, and talking to us and complaining that they don't receive the notice like they should. And, and then Tyler gets the job of getting up and saying, well, we, we do everything according to state law. And then they yell at Tyler for it not being enough. And, and then, you know, Tyler just sits there and says, well, sorry. So I got with Tyler and I asked him, I said, what can the city do that doesn't accrue any additional cost to the city, because that's important, I believe, that can make the citizens more aware of what's going on? So currently, the, as the ordinance is, any zone change is posted in the newspaper as well as, Tyler, help me out.
Public notice website.
Public notice website. So the, the change that we're looking to make is that the, any notice will also be posted to the city website as well as any city social media. And that's as, that's as simple as it gets.
So on the any social media for the city, just so the council knows, we have different operations that maintain their own social media. For example, Ken has a Facebook page that he advertises stuff for leisure services. And Darren has a Facebook page that he advertises stuff for the police department. And Mike's got one for the fire department. We have a main administrative one that we could put these things on. I don't know if they'd get lost on the CCPD
Right.
Or the leisure services. We're trying to advertise, you know, pool hours, and there's a public notice.
Yeah, originally, when we brought it to planning commission, we, it said city Facebook. And then it was, it was brought to, one of the, one of the members had the issue, the idea that, well, how long until Facebook is inept and, you know, irrelevant? And so that's why we, we then changed the verbiage to social media. And, you know, honestly, I didn't even think about the fact that there's, the city has multiple social media accounts with different, different divisions that they have inside of it. The main, the main idea is just to put it on that, that main, that main city social media that, that the public could be made aware. Again, not everybody's going to be made aware of anything. There's always going to be those people that come in and complain that they didn't hear about it, that they, that the city's not doing enough, and, and that, that we're, you know, just trying to get, get around them. But we're, we're trying to just make people just that much more aware of what's going on.
I think it's a great suggestion. I think it's good to use every avenue to let people know what's going on.
Well, and again, the key is to not spend money. A lot of people came, they complained that, you know, they wanted hand-delivered certified mail for every single thing within, you know, a mile and a half of any city ordinance change, or, you know, it gets ridiculous. And we, we just can't do that to the city. The city doesn't have the budget to, to do that and waste that kind of money on, on notifications. This would be relatively inexpensive, if not completely free.
Adam, I know this involves a little bit of expense, but was there any discussion of all of any kind of signage that could be posted at various locations when there are zone changes? I've been in communities where they have done that, where they've actually posted on fences and stuff that this block is under consideration for.
There is signage that gets posted.
Yeah, we do that at three separate locations before planning commission.
Oh, you do?
Yep. And then they're expected to follow the process through.
Is it like yard sign kind of things? Is that what it is?
Yeah. Mr. Drew Jackson will post it on best corners he can find.
Okay. Yeah. That's good. Okay. I wasn't aware. Thank you. No, I think it's a good thing.
Okay. So what I, what I could do, and in fact, I've already done it, instead of just saying the city's social media accounts, just put the city's official social media account, where that would come from admin instead of leisure services.
Unless you want to do it, Ken.
I think we should give Tyler his own social media account for the city and make him post it. Everybody wants to hear from the attorney.
If we had a legal department, if you get negative follow-up.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's going to be a riveting
Negative.
Social media account.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Okay, this will go, uh, let's see. Yes, so we have to, we'll open our public hearing on this now. Is anyone? Okay, we will close our public hearing and move this on to our action agenda. Okay, item number eight, public hearing to consider the offer to purchase city property located at 1044 Hove Hills Drive.
Somebody's got to present this.
Tim Watson with Watson Insurance.
They're not funding me, so.
They're not funding me either. They're the one paying you for the property. Several, I guess, a month ago, we, we requested the disposal of city property on the east side of the Libertad Apartments, I'm just off of Hove Hills, which abuts the Canaveral Water Tank. And the advertisements have been out. And from what I understand, the, the only proposal that was received was the property owner for the, the apartments submitted the a proposal in the RFP packet for the disposal of the property. So that's what we're requesting, is the acceptance of our RFP.
Yeah, the appraisal came back at $600. The offer was $600.
Funny how that works out like that. That's just interesting.
Well, they appraised the value beforehand and afterwards, and $600 difference.
We knew what it was going into the conversation.
So in the offer itself, it referenced language dealing with closing costs, but then it said refer to the offer, or the offer to purchase real estate contract, but I didn't see any language in there. My, my only concern is, well, my recommendation would be that the group deciding, or Libertab, pay all closing costs. My concern is that getting $600 if we're paying closing My concern is that getting $600 if we're paying closing costs.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion that they've approached us. I don't think it should cost us to dispose of the property. So I, I would be in favor of them paying.
I think the contract said split it. I think I read that in there.
Yeah.
And I know the other write-up did not. It said that we, you know, they're asking us to pay it. But it seems like the contract that you prepared or was prepared there, it seemed like I found that in our edit to make sure. And I think it said split it, but I, I'm with.
That one or, on that one or the bird one?
I'm with.
Because we've got both of them, so.
I, I don't think we should.
What are the closing costs be?
Well, they wanted a title policy and that's usually a little more.
That wouldn't be more than.
What we did was 1,200 bucks.
Yeah, but.
I mean, it's a small amount.
They do it by amount.
Be a lot, but it's.
600 bucks wouldn't be, I don't know, 60 bucks.
Yeah, because the base cost of it is going to be.
Yeah, the base cost.
So I just don't, I just don't think we should pay to dispose of the property when they ask to buy it, would be my opinion.
Yeah. Figure 2% for closing costs is high, but that's a rough estimate. Scott would agree, Bird would agree to that. He's a realtor, but yeah, it wouldn't be that, even that much usually, so.
Yeah.
I would say they would have to pay for it.
So do we need to revise the RFP or the contract before the actions taken?
No, I, if the council gives me that direction, then we'll deal with the contracts after.
So tonight, our, our request is just the disposal of the property and I guess acceptance of the purchase price and the RFP.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions tonight? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We will open the public hearing on this. Anyone wants to talk? All right, we will close the public hearing. And would you like this on the consent?
I think it's fine for the consent as long as everybody's comfortable with the, when we agree on that motion.
Yeah, agree to move it. They got to sign the contract anyway, so Tyler can get that.
So just so we know when we're approving this, that that is part of the motion?
It would be.
Okay.
With them.
Put it in the motion and, and would be covered. Well, I don't know. It might, should go on the action so we can make sure that we specify.
So if it's okay with you guys, we'll just, staff will just email them and say, yeah, we'll do 600, but you guys got to pay all the closing costs.
Okay, it's fine.
Yeah, and they, they may not even want a title policy. I mean, when it's coming from the city, you know, leans on it and whatnot.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. So are we going to move it to consent then? Or does it need to be on the action?
Yeah.
Yeah. Something goes wrong, we'll tell you before the meeting.
Yeah.
We can ask you to pull it off.
Push back, I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right.
So right now, we'll go on the consent. Okay. Item number nine, public hearing to consider the office, offer to purchase city property located at 174 West Sunset Drive.
Hello? Scott Bird, just looking to purchase the property.
So the appraisal was done. Appraised the property at $2,000. Cost the city $1,000 to do the appraisal itself. So in the RFP, we're requesting a minimum of $3,000. Mr. Bird is, was the only one who submitted a bid for the property in his letter. He said he'd pay the $3,000. He'd also like to split the individual closing costs and have the city provide a standard title insurance policy.
Unfortunately, my comments would be the same.
We know those.
Yeah, the, the city should not have to bear the cost of that. I don't know how much.
Yeah, we talked about that before.
I would agree. I would agree. I like that green up there. You going to put a park in there, Scott?
Yeah, that's right.
No, and I'd be fine with that. So I don't know what we need to do from here, but yeah, I'm okay with that.
If you're okay with that, we'll put it before a vote next week. Assuming that goes in your favor, then you and I will work on getting the property to actually change title.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So you good with, okay, so we now need to open the public hearing on this. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. You good with this going on the consent? Okay, item number 10 is the ranked choice voting.
Casey Anderson, representing myself. Thank you, council members and staff for the opportunity to be here. I want to explain what ranked choice voting is and why it would be beneficial for Cedar City to participate in a pilot project that the state legislature just passed. Before we do that, I do want to address the letter from Becky Bronson. I'm bummed that she wasn't able to make it tonight. I called her and asked her to be here. She counted ballots at our last convention. And she was highly skeptical going in. And as her letter stated, it was a very positive experience afterwards. So that's why I asked her is because she was counting ballots. So I thought it was a good experience. So I notified her that, that we were on the agenda and anyways, I'm bummed that she wasn't. We'll make it tonight, but. So ranked choice voting, it's very simple. Right now, you just check a box with, with who you want to vote for. What's different is instead of just checking one box for one candidate, you rank the candidates. If there's three candidates, you rank them one, two, and three. If your first preference is the lowest vote getter, then your vote moves to your next preference. So there's two main benefits of this system. And really, the biggest benefit, in my opinion, and the reason why I'm here, this is something that I'm very passionate about, is I believe that every elected official who makes laws to represent people should have to have a majority of the support of people who vote in the election. And right now, that's not a requirement. I think in order to represent people, you should have a majority of, of support. The second benefit of it is it kind of shifts the approach of campaigning. The way that it shifts the approach of campaigning is instead of working so hard just to get your base support out, your approach shifts because now you're fighting for the second preference of everybody else's supporters as well. What that does is it makes campaigning much more positive because you do not want to make other voters, not other candidates' supporters not support you. So majority requirement, much more positive campaigning. And I'll give you one quick example. In South Carolina, the 2016 Republican presidential election, Donald Trump won South Carolina with 32% of the vote. The other candidates in the race, Marco Rubio, Ted Cruz, John Kasich, Ben Carson, and Jeb Bush, split the remaining 68% of the vote. Donald Trump ended up winning 100% of the electoral votes from South Carolina. A very similar situation happened in the next state, which was Nevada. And after that, Donald Trump ended up being the Republican nominee. Now regardless of whether or not that's good or, or bad is up to you guys. But I do want to just highlight the problem with having a candidate win 32% of the vote and then represent entire body. That's my concern. And that's why I think this ranked choice voting system is superior, superior to what we currently have. I first came into this issue in 2012 when I was in the state senate. And I've been speaking to people, everybody I talked to about it since then. There is, the other option in order to ensure that you have a majority vote is to do a runoff. So you take the top two vote getters and they do a runoff. We saw that in Mississippi this year in the US senate. The benefit of ranked choice voting is you don't have the expense of doing a runoff. You do it all on one ballot. So it's, it's very simple. The downside or the hurdle to it is we do, we would have to update our software and our systems. The expense, it sounds like it's somewhere between $10,000 or $17,000. The good news is there's a lot of different vendors that the city could choose from to provide that service. You guys could decide which, which vendor provides the best software for you guys to decide as far as what would be easiest for voters, what would be the best value to the city. The reason why this is on the agenda for tonight, and I wasn't able to speak to you guys earlier about this, is just for time constraints. The pilot project that the state legislature approved, it was near unanimous. I think there was one or two dissenting votes in the House and the Senate. Both of them were because they didn't think it went far enough. They didn't want a pilot project. But the pilot project, the Utah Lieutenant Governor's Office requires you to maybe pass a motion in order to decide if you want to opt in. If you opt in, then you're good to go and you could participate in the pilot project next year. You could also decide if you, you know, later on, next March or April, if you decided that you weren't ready yet, then you could pull back and decide not to do it. But in order to participate, you have to opt in before January 1st. So there's really no downside to opting in because you can always change your mind and come back. But there is a downside to not opting in before January 1st. You're unable to participate. You're unable to kind of have a seat at the table and decide, you know, kind of be, be a part of that conversation as far as what approach would be the best to take or not. That's my presentation.
Do you know what the state's looking for in the pilot project? Are they just trying to shake it out and see how it works or?
I think they're just trying to shake it out. Many other states and cities have adopted this. Maine is the most recent one. There's been, the last that I heard is there's nine to 10 cities that are considering it actually this week, similar to Cedar City. I've heard that there's two to three cities that have already opted in. They would like to get a sufficient number in order to accumulate enough data to really be able to, you know, iron out any ranks that there might be. So they're hoping for more than just two to three cities.
Do they have any money that they were going to pitch in?
The state? What I heard from, from our county clerk earlier today is the state's been more friendly than in the past to making sure that our elections systems are properly funded. I don't have a number on that, but maybe the county clerk could speak more to that in a bit.
Are there any other?
Oh, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it because it's sort of new to me anyway. Because being in the party that I'm in, we usually have one candidate if we're lucky.
What's that?
So what happens, what happens, I mean, first of all, the, the second sort of argument you talked about, what builds a more congenial or friendly election is one to be admired, of course. But you don't know who that second swell of support is. In some cases, you don't know who your base even is. I mean, you hope you know who they are, but you don't. That's why we have secret ballot. So I, I don't know how that, how you really judge that feeling.
So just to give you one example, I've run, been in too many campaigns, but no campaign I've ever been in has had more than two candidates. So I haven't run into that personally. If you look at the 2016 Republican president, presidential primary, for example, Donald Trump, Donald Trump called Ted Cruz Lion Ted, Little Marco. In order to get over 50%, it would be very hard to personally insult people and still expect their, their supporters to, to vote for you in the second and third rounds. And so I, it's certainly speculative, but I would venture that the more positive and outreach in candidates would tend to receive more second and third preference votes.
So is this something that you're seeing happening more on the county convention kind of level or those kinds of things rather than primaries or? Because usually, generally, there's not that many candidates. There might, there might be three. Sometimes it's two, but preferential ranked voting, if, if I didn't get you, then I didn't want to vote for candidate John Doe, but he's my second choice because there was only two people, so he gets my vote.
Yes. There's certainly some elections where this will happen more frequently than others, for sure. Like you mentioned, you know, depending on your political party, you know, you might have more, more candidates than others. On municipal elections, this pilot project only applies to municipal elections. So they'll look at expanding it later on, depending on how the pilot project goes.
Got you.
And I do want to invite anybody who wants to participate to come attend our county convention next. I think we're probably going to do it sometime in March or April. Come and participate and then you can see how the ballots are cast. Like I said, it's just one, two, or three. And you can see kind of how the votes stack up and kind of experience it for yourselves. Because I know it's not easy. I was highly skeptical before we did it two, two conventions ago. But since then, I've, I've really become to appreciate the, the, that approach.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Are there other questions? I know, John, you want to talk?
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
No, no, I do have to run. We're caroling tonight. So I'll, I'll let John speak to it if that's okay. If there's no other questions for me, if that's okay, if I head out and go take care of my youth, that'd be great.
Have fun.
Is there, is there a, is there a place we can, website or something we can go to look more information about this or maybe John will have that information? Okay, thank you.
And just, so ranked choice voting, preferential voting, instant runoff voting, they're all similar terms. There's minor variations. City council would be at liberty to decide, you know, in the future. Like I said, the pilot project is kind of limited, but in the future, you guys could decide, you know, whatever approach you wanted to take. So it'd be good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I always appreciate Casey. He's very eloquent and, and he has been consistently passionate on this issue. As far as I know, there is no appropriation for the pilot program. There have been a few cities and towns that have expressed interest in it. I think a lot are kind of waiting and see, waiting, trying to wait and see. But I think to Councilman Phillips' point, I would like to, if you could, Kit, if you go to that Word document that's got a couple of links in there, if you could click on that second link, there's a little cartoon that kind of explains what it is. And I, for me, keep it simple stupid, so.
The cartoon might explain this, but, but John, just in, just in theory, wouldn't this tend to sort of, does it favor one party or another? I mean, whoever in the majority with most candidates? Whether it be Democrat, Republican, or otherwise?
I actually, I, I think it, I think it really, to Casey's point, it would, it would require you, say you were looking at a very partisan type race, you would need to, in my estimation, and this is just me, you would need to not just play to your base, but play to the middle, if that makes sense? More? Because it's not just the first choice that counts, but the second. The link to video. That second one? Is that going to work? If you hold down control and hit, and then click it.
Everyone knows how voting works, right?
Sure, I just put a bar next to my favorite candidate and cast my vote.
Well, it's a little different than that in San Francisco.
How's that?
Well, in 2002, San Francisco's voted to use ranked choice voting. Sometimes call it an instant runoff election. Voters ranked their top three candidates in order of preference.
Oh, yeah, and if I really like someone, I can vote for them three times as much.
Uh, see, it works like this. On your ballot, you'll see a list of candidates. For this example, instead of candidate names, we'll use colors.
Can we use cats and bunnies instead?
Um, okay. On your ballot, you'll see the list of candidates.
Spectacled.
Your job is to vote for your favorite candidate, just like before, but also to vote for your second and third choice too. There, you're done.
Easy, and that's all there is to it.
On the voting side, yes. The counting side is where it can get interesting.
What do you mean?
If any one candidate gets over 50% of the votes, that's it. They win. But if no one ranks the 50% mark, it usually happens with so many candidates in the race, there is what's called an instant runoff. Cats are in the lead now, but under 50%. Spiders came in last, so they're out. But everyone ranked spiders number one will have their next choice redistributed and added to the overall tally. Now it looks like lizards are last, so they're out. Everyone ranked them first has their second choice added. This process happens as many times as it takes for one candidate to get over 50% of the total votes.
Wait, how do dogs get the lead?
Well, overall, by including voters' second choice votes, dogs got the most votes.
I guess they are loyal.
And that is how ranked choice voting works. And that is how ranked choice voting works.
All right, thank you. So that's, that's kind of a, Casey kind of covered that, but uh, that's kind of how it works. So your, once your vote is eliminated, your second choice goes, uh, becomes your first choice and, and you go until you, uh, finish. In fact-
And during this election cycle, one state will be trying out a new way of deciding who wins. Maine is set to become the first state in the nation to use a method called ranked choice voting. Rather than picking just one candidate, voters will rank their preference of each candidate on the ballot, from first to last. System is designed to ensure they can win not just with the close votes, but with a majority of votes.
Technology is great when it works.
Opponents say it violates the case.
It's your Google Chrome window? If you just pause that for a minute, we'll, we'll come back to it. If you just click on that screen, it'll stop it. There you go. So um, so that kind of gave you just a little bit of an idea, a little flavor of how that works. Um, there's actually one more. I was gonna do this in a different order, but if you could, Kit, go back to that Word document and we'll click on the first one. They use sticky notes and it kind of, it, it syncs in a little bit better with stinky, sticky, sticky notes, not stinky notes. Yeah, that top one. I don't know why these are all California, but this is- I wonder if Go Daddy knows they, they just saw thirty, had thirty sets of eyeballs looking at that.
This is what San Francisco voters will see when they vote for mayor. The ballot asks you to pick a first choice, second choice, third choice, totally random choices by the way. But once you pick them, then what? How does the ranked choice voting algorithm come up with the winner? Let's go to the 87th Cafe. I'm going to explain using sticky notes. We'll keep it simple for candidates. Let's say purple is my top choice. But if I can't have purple, I'll take blue. And if blue doesn't win, I'll go with orange. Now, once out of everyone's votes, there are 20 sticky notes for 20 voters. My candidate, purple, has the most first choice votes, with seven. If it has over 50% as in 11 votes, it wins the election. But if it doesn't have a majority, then things get interesting. The bottom vote getter is now eliminated, that would be orange. Orange voters, now we go to your second choice. Two more for yellow, one more for purple.
So the sticky note kind of makes it a little bit easier to visualize.
So now, a new round. The new bottom, blue, gets eliminated. And blue voters' second choice votes are distributed. And now we have a majority. You can see yellow is the winner, even though it started out with fewer first choice votes than purple. You may be wondering, what about my third choice? Well, it only gets counted if your first and second choices are both eliminated, which cannot happen this time.
Got it, thank you.
All right, so now you know how ranked choice voting works.
Any questions so far that, that I was trying to just make sure we can? Okay.
Does it usually require you to pick three or how could it be manipulated if somebody only voted one?
So if there are 10 candidates, you have uh, nine choices, right? Uh, and yes, the answer is it can get a bit complicated. Um, in fact, that's a good segue into the PowerPoint. We're just gonna do a couple of pages of the PowerPoint. I apologize, Mayor, I'll try and move this along. So if you- No. On the left side, if you scroll down to um, my little thumb drive, there you go. E S D U S B, up about, there you go. Ranked choice. And then the, yeah, presentation to UAC. I won't give you the whole boring presentation, but the first couple of pages actually outlines how it, it works. So um, if you go to the second uh, slide. So there are a couple of ways that you can set up a ballot. So, and this is one. So if you look at that ballot there, you'll see that there are three areas for the, for that race. Um, you can also set it up like a Scantron where there's a whole bunch and I'll, I'll give you an example of that, but it's more like a, a grid. And you, and they're all together. So what you would do is you'd say, oh, what is your favorite place? So you'd say Cedar Lake is my first place and my second choice is Powderhorn Lake and my third choice is Shingle Creek, right? Um, and then if you could, uh, Kit, go to the next slide. All right, so this is, um, this is an actual race that had a bunch of candidates. And um, there were 254,016 votes. And if, if I vote for the person that was in last place at that, at the first round, then my vote goes to the first person. And part of the struggle with this is the algorithm. And so, um, if you go to the next one. So now if you notice, some of the ballots get used up, they're called exhausted. And so now there's, out of 254 ballots, only 229,000 are still in, in play. But London Breed got the, got over the 50% threshold. And you just keep doing successive rounds and they set up that algorithm to basically say whoever voted for the last place in this round, their first, their second place vote or third place vote, third choice vote gets moved up to that vote and then you exhaust votes. And um, it gets a little bit more complicated when there's more than one to choose for. So on city council, you'd have vote for two or vote for three, whereas with mayor, it would be vote for one. And so vote for one would be, kind of would look like this. Uh, vote for two and three actually get a little complicated. And that's where I approached our vendor, um, the ESNS and asked them if they could support ranked choice voting. And they said, we can support ranked choice voting for a vote for one scenario. But they're, they, they, they weren't ready to support it for a vote for two or vote for three. And, and it's because the, the algorithm gets a little bit more complicated as you go. Um, one of the things, and I, and I really admire uh, Casey's passion on this, is that in a county convention or a uh, central committee meeting, um, it's, you're talking about a hundred voters or so and, and fewer choices. Um, if you could, Kit, back to the folder, there's a, there's a PDF I want to show you. Um, it gets, yes, uh, RCV sample ballot 11. Back to ranked choice there. Down about, there you go, up one, yep. So, so Weber County said, what would our ballot look like if we had ranked choice for the 2016 election? And so if you could scroll down, first of all, it would be four pages. Um, so we would have a giant ballot. So this, if you, if you could scroll, this is the presidential. And this actually uh, addresses a little bit of what Casey was talking about. So you have um, all these different parties and you've got your first, second, third, all the way down to 11th choice. Um, and, and, and I, I don't disagree with him. I think it would probably change uh, the way you would have to campaign. Uh, but this is the way your ballot would look. Um, and it's fine. Uh, one of the concerns that we have as clerks is that it's gonna be a challenge for voter education a little bit until they get used to it. Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. Uh, but it's not something that we can support right now. And so I asked around at our state convention and said, okay, we had a few um, providers there. And actually we had one uh, that said they would be able to support multiple, uh, you know, vote for two or three uh, races. Uh, and so, and, and I actually, I know the gentleman, I've got some cards here for you. And if you're not bored to tears, I'm sorry, you're clearly, yeah, I'll, I'll keep trying. All right, before I go on, are there any questions?
So what would keep somebody from, I know that it says you can't vote for the same person. But when we have paper mail-in ballots, what keeps somebody from filling in choice one, two and three, all being the same person?
Nothing. And, and they still actually get a vote, but they only get the one. They don't get a second or third or fourth choice. In other words, you, you just wasted your second, third and fourth choice. Um, one of the, one of the big selling points, um, and, and, and I actually mentioned this to Casey on the phone this morning and, and I don't think he was aware, but one of the selling points is that allows you to eliminate, um, as a municipal and as you, as you miss, as a municipality, allows you to eliminate one of your um, elections because it's called an instant runoff. And you basically throw all the candidates on the ballot in November. Uh, and then you use ranked choice to figure out who the top vote getters are. Uh, and then you don't have a primary. And so you, you actually save money by not having a primary. I philosophically, I'm opposed to that. I like the idea of being able to vet the candidates a second time. Um, that's just me. So as it is now, um, since I've talked in circles a little bit. Um, ranked choice voting for municipalities isn't something I can support for you in 2019. I anticipate that in 2021, we'll be able to, to do that. We, we did visit with our vendor ESNS, um, and uh, they are working on that. They also need to get certified in it. Um, Election IQ, uh, this gentleman, Dan Chalupski, I actually know him well. He's the, he's the vice president of, of the company. And he actually, um, I was able to observe an election he ran in Beaver County in 2014. Uh, he's very capable. Um, I was a little sad that he, his company uh, didn't win. Uh, but in solidarity with the state, I, I stayed with the SNS. Um, we, we benefit a lot from being able to support one another uh, at the county level. But in, in terms of that, Dan did tell me that he would be able to support uh, multiple, uh, vote for more than one ranked choice voting. Um, now, I think I would be a little disingenuous if I didn't share a few of my other concerns. Um, and these are from the clerk group. Um, ballot length, complexity and voter confusion are definitely uh, concerns that, that we have as a group. Um, another thing is, is we can't just take the results and release them. We have to run them through this algorithm. So if you think about it, we get, and this is vote by mail or any type of election. You have provisional ballots that come in later, YOCA voters that are out of the country. And every time you get new ballots, you have to run the algorithm over again. Which also means that those second choices could change. And so you'd have this election night reporting and then you would have, every time we would tabulate, we would have to rerun this algorithm. And one of the things that's concerned us as election people is that it's, gets difficult for us to defend the results. Because we've now taken the, the, the raw data and then we've had to run it through this algorithm and say, well, trust us, this is right. Um, and that's been a little bit of a concern for me, whereas right now I can, I can show you every single ballot and every single vote. Um, and, and I can reproduce those. And I, it's not that it's not reproducible either, but it's that I can, that I can, in a straightforward way, defend those. Um, there is a little bit more programming cost, but depending on how you uh, run it, you can eliminate a primary election. I'm not gonna argue that, but the, the, the group kind of argued, pushed back on the civil campaign argument. Um, there was also a claim that ranked choice voting engages more voters. Um, I think that's, I think that remains to be seen. I, I actually don't think it's a bad thing. I think, I worry uh, from a voter education perspective, that we would really need to educate the voters on how to do it. Because you can either do a matrix like this, you could have a grid, or you would show a separate race for your first, second, third, fourth and so on choices. Um, and either way, it takes more space up on the ballot. But uh, you would have to train the voters and we'd want to be super consistent on how we laid that out. Um, and we would still answer a lot of questions. Um, And then uh, another option is rather than having, rather than having at-large seats, you could uh, you know, change them to, you know, specific seats. And it would allow you to have, get to that majority a little bit easier. So those are a few of, of the, the talking points on ranked choice voting. I don't feel strongly either way. I want to support you. I appreciate that we've been able to work with you as a county. Um, Renan has been fantastic to work with. Um, we appreciate um, the support we've gotten from Cedar City. Uh, not all counties uh, do all of the elections uh, in, in their counties. Uh, and we're fortunate, I feel fortunate at least that, that we so far have been able to. Um, it allows us to kind of consolidate all of that uh, equipment, knowledge and information. Um, but at the same time, you, you're not gonna hurt my feelings if you want to give Dan a call and, and talk it through with him. Uh, and, and see if that's a direction you want to go um, for that. Um, any reactions, questions?
I have lots of reactions, but I'm trying to assimilate all this information. It just-
It's a lot.
I mean, it is. And uh, the one thing about elections that, and I, I'm sure from the old school, so I'm trying to remain open to new ideas. But I, when you support a candidate, whoever that candidate might be, you do it because of the values they stand for and things. I don't want to, I don't want to dumb down our system where, where I'm not getting the person I think is gonna do the best job, but I'll get the second best or maybe the third best, in my mind, of course, not in everybody else's. And so I, I've struggled with that a little bit, but um, I want to learn more about it.
Well, and I, I think the argument, and, and Casey and I had a good cha- chance to visit about this this morning. But there is a lot to be said for his, his passion really comes down to, are you in office because of a plurality or did you get a majority of the votes? And so for him, this is a good avenue to be able to get to more than 50% where you really feel like you've got a proper mandate. Um, that being said, there are and will continue to be circumstances where that isn't the case. Um, we have, you know, if we did a vote by, a vote for three or four, then ranked choice or not, you gotta get up to 25%. Well, with ranked choice, you gotta get up to 25%. Um, and that algorithm gets even crazier because you have to take also the winners' votes that don't, are no longer needed and apply them to the next, anyway, yeah. Okay, y'all bored to tears yet?
No, it just seems interesting that you could vote for like Donald Trump first and then Hillary Clinton second.
You really could, you really could.
Or none of the above.
Like, that just seems so bizarre.
It's, it's, it's a different paradigm. And to be fair, I think the, the clerk group, this, this discussion's been happening for a few years. And um, at first we're like, this is ridiculous. This is, and the more we've talked about it, you know, it's, it's not. I don't think it's terrible, but it's definitely a different paradigm. I mean, like you said, you could be, you could be Donald Trump on one line, Hillary Clinton on the next or whatever, you know, um, but uh-
John, one thing that this could fix is the unintended consequences of that's to be 54. Because you look at the race in Cali, when Gray Davis was, you know, when they had the ballot out in California for Gray Davis's replacement, they had 50 people on the ballot.
Right.
And so when you look at that and you see somebody could win and represent the people with five or 10 or whatever percent of the vote.
Right.
This would fix that problem.
You know, and, and that was, that was one of the discussions that Casey and I had had, that in, in terms of count my vote, that's actually, now we're talking now a partisan primary, but, but uh, that's actually probably one of the better applications of ranked choice voting. Um, because uh, to your point, Councilman Phillips, I mean, i- if I'm voting, if, if I'm a Republican and I'm voting for Republican candidates, then, you know, there's, we're talking about a partisan primary, which is different than a municipal, you know, election. Uh, and so, yeah, that, in my mind, that's probably one of the best applications of this, if we were gonna do that, is these partisan primaries in, in the wake of count my vote.
Thank you, John.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Can I address this issue for a moment?
Briefly.
Good evening, Tom Jett. First, let me say, anything we can do to keep civility in our, in, in our elections, that's, that's fantastic. But I'm not sure what's worse, is lack of civility or ignorance. And, you know, I'm not that bright, but I'm so confused right now. It's gonna take the full three years just to get me up to 20- It's going to take the full three years just to get me up to 20% uh, in understanding of, of this system. It's, uh, I, I'm relatively involved in the political system in, in this community, from the county level to the school in the city. And people are confused enough on who they're going to vote for. And wow. This, uh, this has me completely, uh, discombobulated when it, when it comes to trying to figure out exactly how this is going to work. Number, the second issue is, is the, we will need to have a, some type of redundant system that can determine whether or not the, the first count was, was correct. And so I think we're going to end up paying for a second redundant system, or we will probably face some legal challenges if we are not able to determine exactly, look at ballots. I don't think our county level, nor do I think the county staff is, has the education nor the, the ability from a manpower standpoint to, and this is not saying they're ignorant, this is saying that uh, to determine who's first, who's second. I mean, this is like an Abbott and Costello episode, who's on first and what's on second. That, I think the, the third, third issue with this is, um, if we're going to spend the, and I'm using the numbers that were approached here this evening, the $10,000 to $17,000, is this something that, uh, we need to, is that what the vote is tonight? Where we will be guaranteeing the $10,000 to $17,000 if we opt in? Or is this strictly, strictly a token saying, well, we're not opposed to it, so we will jump into it? And I realized that it was said this evening, I think it was April, that, you know, we could walk away. But are we having any financial commitments that, to, to this before it goes into, goes into action? Or are we funding these, uh, algorithm companies or the computer, uh, hardware, software companies for the next three or four years, so they can learn also? And then I think the fourth thing is Maine, that's great, that Maine's doing it. Uh, or, or San Francisco is doing it. I'm not sure if those are the ones that we should be hooking our star to, to the wagon, the, to take us forward. This, I think this is a major issue that needs to be contemplated and discussed. And I think that, I think the fourth issue is, and this is probably the most important, why is it coming up, oh, two weeks before, well, actually one week before the legislate, or before our city council ends, and we go into another year? Why, why wasn't this addressed six months ago through some kind of workshop, some kind of educational, you know, slow digestion of this? It's almost like eating an elephant. I mean, it's a, it's a big bite. And so thank you for taking your time, and no disrespect to our county clerk. I appreciate the art, the articulation and Casey's articulation of this. But I, I think it's way too much to ask our city council or our, our, our city leadership to try to digest this and really make any kind of informed decision that is binding on, on our city government at, at, with this short of, unless you guys have had an education prior to me, and so.
I could hook you up with my actuary son that I sat down with over the weekend and had him try to educate me, so.
Well, it's, uh,
I, I agree.
This, this was, uh, again, great presentation. I, I'll reiterate my first comment. I support anything where there's kindness and we're talking about the ideas of our communities and instead of the personalities. But we, we just got to be careful that we don't jump in with two feet, with, with both feet.
Well, it would definitely be with no commitment if we did opt in, so.
So that's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of points. So being able to audit, the auditability has been a concern for us. Um, we would have to go back to the ballots. And then if we, if there were like a recount or an audit, we would have to re-tabulate the ballots and rerun it through the algorithm. That, that was, that was actually one of the concerns we had is, how do I, how do I audit an algorithm, you know? Do you, do you run it through a second algorithm, see if you get the same results? So there was, there was, uh, uh, one issue there. And then, uh, in terms of the pilot project, I think it, it allows you to opt in. The reason, uh, Tom, that this has come forward this time is because of Mr. Anderson, uh, like I say, has a passion for it. Um, Renan and I had spoken about it earlier in the year, and, um, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it was, it was, uh, it was more of a, maybe let's let somebody else be the pilot program. Kind of a, an approach. And, and I don't want to, is, is that, am I still? Okay. Uh, and so, uh, and I don't want to speak overly positively of it. I was trying to be as impartial as I could. One of my articles that I didn't share with you was, that was a city in Colorado that had implemented it in 2006, and then voted again, voted it down in 2009 after having done a couple of cycles of it. So I, I, I was trying to be impartial, but at the same time, I, I don't think it's a panacea. So, any other questions?
Thank you. That was a good explanation, so.
This can go on the action agenda for next week to decide if we want to opt in or not.
Could we be able to verify that there was no other commitment other than having the options before then?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
So we'll have that on the action agenda. Now we will move on to the staff portion with item number 11, presentation of the final draft report for the wastewater treatment plant and fluent reuse feasibility study.
Good evening. I'm John Behring with Corolla Engineers.
It's cold in here.
It's freezing in here.
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Uh, with me also is Corey Dow from Corolla Engineers. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and visit with you again to present, um, the final draft report. You all should have a copy in front of you there. Um, so, um, we're going to do a few things, and we'll go through this fairly quickly this evening. I know it's getting late in the evening for you. Um, let's see if we can get her quicker to quick. It's on, so. No, there we go. I'm not clicking it, but maybe you are. It's, it's doing magic tricks. That's great. Okay, so, um, Kit, are you, you in the controls? Somebody's doing the controls because I'm not doing it. Great. So we're going to go through a few things. Um, Corey's going to go through a brief tour of the report layout that you've got in front of you. This is the outline. Give you a quick refresher on the alternatives in case somebody was not here, um, last time we visited with you. Um, but that's just to basically tee up the conclusions, uh, from the, uh, from the report, so to you know basically, um, what the findings of it were. And then, that's an important part. And then we'll talk just about next steps, uh, from here. Um, the big next step, though, is that we're going to come back, um, proposing to come back a week from, um, now, when we ask you to adopt the final report. Uh, so with that, I'll ask Corey to, um, give you a quick tour of the report.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good to be back with you. Um, so there is a, a more detailed table of contents there in the report for you, but these are the basic sections we go over in the report. We introduce what we're doing here, give some background information. We go over our basis of planning and the assumptions that were made, uh, and any information that was used to incorporate, uh, our analysis. Then we give a detailed description of each alternative, um, what they are, what they consist of. And then we go through and do the analysis and provide a summary of how each alternative was ranked based on the economic and non-economic criteria that was set with the project team. Um, and then we, uh, based on those results, we provide some conclusions on, uh, an implementation class of how to move forward. So I'm going to, I'm going to burn through these, uh, alternatives really quick. Um, we just wanted to kind of reiterate what we did last time, just so everyone knows what we're talking about here. So this is a list of the alternatives here. There were six of them. First one being no action, continuing business as usual. The second was to, uh, move an existing agriculture operation to the existing land, land application site near the wastewater treatment facility. Third was to send, um, the reclaimed water to an existing operation further south of the plant. Uh, that's kind of broken up into an A and B, what that I'll show you here in a second. Um, the fourth was to, um, supplement and expand the existing secondary system and store water near Fiddler's Canyon. The fifth was to store water near the Enic Robin and utilize the agricultural operations in the Enic area there. And the sixth was to construct a satellite treatment facility that would recharge the aquifer, uh, near the airport. So just as last time, I have a graphic representation of what's going on here. Uh, this is alternative two, uh, where we would move an operation to utilize the land application site for irrigation. Again, this would require a very large storage volume to store winter water. And then wouldn't need much upgrades at the plant. Uh, quickly moving on to, this is 3A, so this is sending water south of the treatment plant to an unspecified location. Um, this mapped area here just represents the amount of acres needed, uh, to irrigate that amount of water. This, again, would require a large storage volume, uh, just under 3,000 acre feet near the plant for winter water and a pump station to pump to the areas down there. So kind of the flip side of, uh, alternative three, uh, that we listed as 3B is still sending this water south of the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, but instead of having that large storage facility, how we would store that water would be to add advanced treatment at the plant so that we can then recharge the aquifer with this water directly. Alternative four, um, is supplementing the existing secondary system, uh, for the city and the storing excess water, uh, in Fiddler's Canyon as, as well as recharging the aquifer. This point down here just represents, um, the point at which we would tie into the secondary system. There would be recharged wells along the way here to help store that, uh, winter water. Again, this would require advanced treatment, uh, one because of geotechnical conditions in the, near the Fiddler's Canyon. There would be pretty quick percolation into the aquifer. Um, that was driving treatment standards for that. Moving on to alternative five, this is, again, is storing the water, the winter water in, in the reservoir. Um, again, because of the geotechnical conditions anticipated, that would drive advanced treatment near the wastewater plant. So you are now having advanced treated technologies as well as a large storage volume in the existing Robin area to feed these ag users. Alternative six, um, would be constructing a whole separate treatment facility just north of the airport. Um, that would be, that wouldn't utilize the full amount that, uh, the current wastewater treatment plant is rated for. This would be about 2 million gallons per day. This would be an advanced treatment facility that would directly recharge the aquifer at this location right here. This would be a year-round benefit, um, but not necessarily for agricultural operations, just recharging the aquifer about 2 MGG a day all year round. So just a quick summary table here, these are the major components with each alternative. As you can see here, there, there's, your, your big costs are either storing, uh, winter water, uh, with a large storage reservoir, or you're adding advanced treatment and then recharging the aquifer in the winter. Those will be your big cost items. And then, um, something pretty common to all of them would be the conveyance infrastructure needed to take water from point A to point B and such. That's kind of a lot thrown at you very quickly, but we want to make sure we get through it quickly. We, we talked about this in the last presentation as well. So as I burn through that, any, any questions or any clarifications needed on the alternatives themselves?
I have a quick question. I, I, on the alternatives that you mentioned, were they listed in any kind of, are they listed in a preferential order, or are there just strictly alternate forms to look at? You haven't placed any preference over one or the other?
We have, and that's what we're going to get into next with conclusions. Great segue. I'll turn the time back over to John.
Right. So, so that was just kind of the facts of what the alternatives are. And then the next was the analysis. And so I'm going to, do a quick refresher on what that analysis was and what it told us and the conclusions from it. So, um, we did cost those. Corey mentioned that we did economic and non-economic analysis of that. Um, and this, the economics, um, really, uh, highlighted some important features of that. And, um, also that all of those alternatives end up being very, fairly capital intensive, which were driven by a couple of things, and, and it's the big parts of these capital bars. For the first couple alternatives, two and 3A, um, they were driven by storage costs. Um, he mentioned those 2,900 acre foot reservoirs. So an acre foot is an acre of land a foot deep. So 2,900 acre feet. When it was cited by the, the wastewater treatment facility, he showed that, that's actually about 150 acres laid out 20 feet deep. Maybe it could be a little deeper, might have to be a little shallower, depending on groundwater conditions there, but picture, you know, on the order of 150 acres, acres of land, 20 feet deep, that's a pretty big reservoir.
That's a big hole.
Yeah, that's a lot of storage. But it's also, that's the whole community's wastewater stored over about a seven-month period. So that does take a lot of storage, and it costs a lot to line, to not only construct that, but to line it, and also to provide some shade, shade structure to prevent algae from growing so that it is usable, um, come the next year for irrigation. So storage drives a lot when we're trying to use wintertime water. Or alternatively, if we're not going to store it and use it in the next year, if we try and make use of it in the wintertime through aquifer recharge, then that drives pretty significant treatment costs. And you see that in that medium blue bar in most of the other alternatives. And so this analysis, the economic part, showed us that, um, there are pretty significant, very significant capital costs associated with each of these alternatives. But there's a reason for that, and that reason is because we're trying to make full use of affluent that's available, which is a, a very good cause and a good thing to try and do. But it comes at a very high cost. And the high, high cost is because of that wintertime water use, either trying to store the water or trying to treat it so that we can recharge it, treat it very, very high standards. So that winter storage or treatment and recharge drives capital cost to very high costs for all the alternatives. Alternative six you see is lower, but we're also not getting as much of a water supply benefit because that was the one where we're tapping a sewer before it gets all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. So we're only treating 2 MGD and we're using 2 MGD, million gallons per day, instead of the full 4.8 MGD that all the others are doing. So we get about 2,000 acre feet of benefit out of that instead of about 5,400 acre feet of benefit out of the two through five alternatives. So it looks cheaper than it is.
Yeah.
But the benefit in this isn't as high either. So with that, the planning team suggested, and we went through this last time, but the planning team said, hmm, that's kind of a problem. $100 million, 150, 200, that's really not very practical to implement.
The, the challenge with that is we, you know, our, our West Desert project, they're looking at 300 million for Wawa and Pine. Pine is about 200 million. And when that starts approaching the cost of bringing 15,000 acre feet, it just doesn't, we can't afford both.
Sure.
And, and it's unfortunate that in a meeting, um, that we had, I can't remember how long ago, I lose track of time, but, um, we had the division of water quality in here. And I asked them specifically if we put in a sand filter and could, um, you know, bring that water from a type two to a type one, if we could recharge in a gravel pit. They, they said yes at the time, but they backed off from that. So, so the, the, the extreme costs we're seeing is having to do reverse osmosis for the water we have to store. And that's, that's just the killer, right?
That's part of it. Yeah. And there are non-RO technologies as well that are maybe viable. Um, but they're not inexpensive either.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so.
So it seems like.
What we're also seeing in the industry is there's a pretty rapid evolution in how folks are handling, potable reuse regulations. And there are none in Utah right now, but if we look at surrounding states and western states that are developing them, there's pretty rapid evolution in how those are being handled.
Did you look into to see if there's any other states that are starting to recharge with type one water? Is, is there anybody doing it?
I wouldn't call it type one water necessarily, or, or, you know, the other states equivalent of it, but, um, we have looked into that. And the standards are, um, not similar, I would say. So, for example, El Paso has been using, um, aquifer recharge basins for, for some time, but they use a pretty advanced treatment before they do that. It's not RO. Um, they've been doing it for decades, but, um, they, they use, um, an ozone biologically active filtration process, um, which is not RO, but it's pretty advanced treatment. Um, and similar to what we're seeing many places put in for potable reuse treatment now. Um, Orange County Water District in, um, Southern California has also been doing direct injection-based uh, for recharge for decades. They do use RO. So it varies depending on where you're at, but, um, I, I wouldn't say type one, type of water quality is. I, I wouldn't say type one, type of water quality is, is a common practice. What we did find is that, though, with those pretty significant capital costs driven by that winter water use, that maybe we ought to think about whether that's our best first step. Doesn't mean we can't get there eventually, but maybe that's a big first step to take. And so the planning team suggested that we take a look at a couple of alternatives that still do the same benefit in the summertime, but take a look at not doing the wintertime reuse and see what that does to the cost and kind of the feasibility. And so we did look at two revised alternatives, which basically were alternatives two and five, but skip the winter storage or don't do wintertime recharge. So in this case, these are irrigation based alternatives. And if we didn't do wintertime storage, trying to recapture that water over the winter and then reuse it, or use it for the next summer's irrigation season, we would have no winter storage, a smaller irrigation area. The downside is less reclaimed water use. So alternative two are revised, alternative two, two R, and revised alternative five or five R showed us this kind of trade-off. You get about 2,000 acre feet per year of benefit instead of 5,400 acre feet per year of water supply benefit. But the cost, instead of being somewhere north of $100 million, comes down to 17 to 29 million dollars.
5,400 is the max output, right?
Yeah, 5,400. MGd buildout capacity of the plant.
What are we at right now, about 38?
It's in the two and a half, three MGd.
Three?
2.4.
2.4 right now?
Right, so buildout's projected to be about 4.8, and that's what we based our planning on. So 4.8 MGd translated into acre feet per year is 5,400 acre feet per year. It's just different, water planners use acre feet per year. Treatment plant people use MGd. So we just got to speak different languages sometimes.
And that's what actually comes out of the plant?
That's right.
That we're talking?
Yeah, that's right. So the, you get maybe 40% of the, the water supply benefit, but the costs come down an order of magnitude. And so the, kind of the cost effectiveness arguably is, is much better. And if nothing else, it's a much smaller bite to take off in terms of an initial step of water reuse. And so that is kind of our conclusions that we'll get to in a moment. So the seasonal reuse reduces costs, but produces a lower water supply benefit. And this is not a rank choice voting. In fact, there was no voting. But you saw this last time, we explained how this worked in terms of the, the decision scoring for the alternatives. Alternative two still scores the highest against those weighted criteria. But it comes with kind of that downside of maybe kind of a, too big of a bite to take in terms of an initial capital cost. And so it did what we expected it to do. It brought down the cost, so it did better on the, the orange boxes there are off a bit, but it, it did better on the costs. So going, if you follow the arrows from five to five R, two to two R, the yellow boxes got bigger because we did better on the cost, cost came down, so got a better score. And it did better on the, or not as good, sorry, on the water supply benefit. So the red bars are smaller as we expected because we had 2,000 instead of 5,400 acre feet of water supply benefit. So that's the trade-off we expected. So alternatives two R and five R, if you follow the, the scoring kind of rubric here, it did about what we expected there. That said, I think then we move into kind of what are the practicalities of this? And the conclusions that we draw from this essentially is that alternative two does best satisfy the most important criteria identified by the planning team. But the cost of that wintertime reclaimed water storage or treatment really might make that overall project infeasible for that first phase of reuse. When we're talking north of $100 million, that may not be feasible for the community to bear as a first step. We just talked about that cost benefit trade-off with seasonal only reuse. 40% of the water benefit, but for a fraction of the cost. And that's seasonal reuse then, if we did alternative two R or alternative five R, some variation on that theme, that could be the first phase of a future year-round reuse program. In other words, if we implement that seasonal only reuse, that doesn't preclude us from getting to the future year-round reuse. That doesn't mean we can't get there. It's just maybe a good first stepping stone towards that ultimate goal and one that's much more affordable in the meantime, towards that longer term goal.
So maybe, maybe we, we go after the low hanging fruit, go with the, just the summer ag users, and then maybe there's new technology comes, comes out in the next few years.
Or, or we get, you know, the regulatory development goes, goes the way we'd like it to go.
Right.
Right, and we can start working on that.
Right.
Right? But in the meantime, we've got something that's much more feasible to implement that we know and is achievable, is much more financially bearable.
Right, maybe there's some states that do some, do some recharge with type one and instead of precedent, well, we could use.
Right, and we can, we can explore that and head down that path. And that's, none, none of that's precluded by starting with this seasonal only reuse. Exactly. Other considerations, though, if we're thinking about two R versus five R in terms of agricultural operation, with two R, that's the one where we're moving an agricultural operation up to the plant site or the, the land application site now. And we need to identify operations. We need to do that either way. Somebody willing to, to use the reclaimed water in two R, you got to identify somebody to move. Whereas five R, you got to just identify somebody willing to stay put but use the water. Under two R, arguably, you might find, need to find some incentives to get somebody willing to, to make that move of their, their actual farming operation. In terms of ability to use the reclaimed water for other uses, under two R, you'd be limited to using that water on the land application site. Thinking further down the road with five R, where that's towards the east and over towards the Enic area. In the future, we talked about this in our planning group, it is possible that those pipelines could be extended to other uses. For example, if this, if the group wanted to ultimately extend that on and tie it into the secondary system in the Fiddler's Canyon area, you could extend that pipeline then, then down further in and tie it in.
It's on the way, right? I mean, did you look at the route, if that would be a logical route to go?
It could be extended further.
So we're just kind of stopping off there for a minute, see how that works? And if we, if that doesn't work, will you send it on to Fiddler's down there?
That's right. Although, once you've got to connect it to somebody, you know, it might be hard to, to convince the user to, to stop using that water, but.
Right.
Nevertheless, it is, it is on the way.
And one thing that might change that is, is that belt route goes in, depending where that goes, and that spurs more development out there. Some of those pivots may go away, so.
That's right.
So then we haven't wasted that infrastructure going there. We can just say, well, let's just, if we lose those ag folks there, we just keep going on to.
So there, there's flexibility with that, right? And the belt route is, there's a map of where that belt route is, at least currently envisioned going. That map is now in our report.
Right.
Regional benefits, there's regional groundwater withdrawal reductions under either one of them. So, you know, that's, that's a benefit under either one. The location of that withdrawal might vary between the two of it. And then the cost, we already talked about the, the cost between the two of them. The difference in the costs, and we talked about that at our last presentation to council here. The main difference in the cost between those is that there is a cost for land acquisition assumed under alternative two R. It's assumed that we would need to, to purchase the land from which the agricultural operation would be moved under alternative two R from where they're currently doing the farming up there to the site by the wastewater treatment facility. It's assumed we would have to purchase the land. That would be relocating their farming operations. And that's the main difference. There is more piping under alternative five R than under two R.
What kind of costs were involved in pumping the water from the plant up to the Enic Groban?
Sure, there's, there's a pump station cost under either one, and that's about the same. I mean, all those costs are detailed in appendix A of your report, so you've got that.
So is it similar cost to the ag folks pulling water from, what do we decide they're pulling from, other 300 feet maybe?
Yeah, so the, the operations costs from a user perspective, the power cost should be a little bit lower because the elevation gain is going to be a little bit less going from, you know, more or less ground level. There isn't much elevation difference from the, the plant out to any of the sites we're talking about. There will be some friction losses in the pipe.
So you're planning on, when you pump that water up to the Enic Groban, are you planning on charging the farmers for the pumping cost? They're paying for the pumping cost?
The assumption in the report at the city's direction is that the farmers would get charged the power cost of that, the operations costs, that there would be no net cost to the city for that.
I think that'd be a given. I mean, they, they're paying to pump it out of the ground, they surely should pay for it to get there.
That would be the slight cent of that. Them paying for that charge to get the water to them would be less than them pumping out of there.
Right.
Did you calculate in your calculations any? We're, we're seeing a lot more bio solids production out there with our new system than we have the trickling filters. And we've got a significant cost of, of hauling that, those bio solids to the landfill. You know, and, but those bio, bio solids are great that they can be used for agricultural purposes. Did you evaluate that at all?
No, there's no evaluation of bio solids in here.
Are you saying maybe the ag folks could use that?
Yeah, it's, it's good for, you know, it's a class of bio solids that can be used for agriculture use.
So they could spread that on their, on their.
So one thing is the council looks at the draft report before next week. Appendix A has all of Corolo's cost assumptions on all these alternatives. When you go through that, they've made notations on what they've included in the cost assumptions. And there are some of these that they've disclosed in the appendix and in a footnote that says, this option doesn't include buying up water rights, for example. So these cost assumptions they've, they've made, they've made very conservative estimates. But just read it carefully so you, so we realize that these are cost estimates, and if we go spec out a program and a project, this might not be the actual cost. There might be other things that roll into it, such as buying water rights that are going to cost more money. 2,000 acre feet of water rights at, what's our going rate, 3,500?
3,500 was the numbers.
So that adds up pretty quick.
So just a couple of comments. Mayor, I hope that we look at the low hanging fruit on this option five, five R. And we just got a draft groundwater management plan from the state engineer, which is quite aggressive as far as holding our feet to the fire and as far as solving our, some of our problems. We have a, so we, we have a safe yield of 21,000 acre feet, and we're using 28,000, so that's 7,000. So if we could implement even this five R, we could at least, from what I'm hearing is, is you know, save 1,000 acre, about 1,000 acre feet a year. So it'd be about a one-seventh of our problem. Does that sound about right?
About 2,000 acre feet is, is correct, 2,023.
Right, but we can't use, we can only get about half that because we're only using it through the summer, right?
No, 2,000 is the summer demand.
Oh, is it? So we, so that's, that's even better, so. So that, and, and, and the state engineer, that's what he wants to see is that we're making progress on and whittling that deficit down. And that's a big deal, 2,000 acre feet to our seven. With all of our other recharge projects we have, that's a big deal. And I hope that we, you know, look at ways that we can do it the very least expensive and, and try to move forward, you know?
Okay. Are there questions about the details of that? The only thing I've got left in the presentation is just next steps, which is essentially we, we wrap up the report, we get it to you in your packet for next week and ask you to adopt it next Wednesday.
But just because we adopt it doesn't mean we have to. I mean, that's just.
We're, we're adopting the plan and your recommendations, but that's all we're doing at this point.
And, and there aren't really recommendations so much as conclusions as, as provided in the report, yes, sir.
So if we, if we adopt these and we want to pursue one of these options, okay, but let's go talk to Enic, let's go talk to Iron County, let's go talk to the Central Iron County Water Conservancy.
Oh, absolutely.
And let's also include in that conversation importing water from Beaver County at $300 million. And realize that for the Conservancy District to do that, and Paul Monroe can come and give us a better presentation than I can, but for the Conservancy District to do that, they're going to need financial pledges from us to, to accomplish that goal. And then let's have the conversation to say, if the aquifer is being overdrawn by a certain amount of acre feet here, what's Cedar City's financial commitment to, to resolve that problem? Are we the sole funding source to resolve that problem? Or do we need other funding sources and other partners to do it? Municipalities use about 30% of the water in the basin. We're not the biggest water user around, so let's have that bigger conversation and try to enlist partners to help us with this problem.
Absolutely.
Biting off more than we can chew on our own.
I mean, 10% of that wastewater is Enix, 10% is county roughly, and 80% Cedar Cities, but I agree 100%. We've, we need to get all the, we're all in this together, and we need the all entities to help solve the problem.
And if I might take an opportunity to point out also that there is in the appendix a funding memo that describes state and federal funding opportunities, none of which come with a guarantee, but there are opportunities out there and a, a kind of recommended path towards pursuing those that also might help offset the cost of implementing whichever you, path you might choose to move forward with.
Can we use any of the wastewater funds for a project? Anything, any, any of those funds can we use for any of this or not?
Which set of funds? So you're talking?
The enterprise.
Impact fee funds or user rates? Currently, the user rates for that fund are set on O and M for the plant, right? It's our cost to operate and maintain the plant. That's what we're set at. So if we want to.
We have some in there for capital costs, but it's not.
It's not $17 million for the capital costs. If we want to go down that road, we can recalculate and suggest a different user rate. That might be a mechanism to fund things. But we don't, what we don't want to do is short our current O and M because that plant's O and M intensive. Our guys do a great job, but there's a lot of O and M out there.
Well, it seems to me that we've asked these gentlemen to put forth a study for us, and we, under the studies. So we, we look and we read it and we evaluate it and we look at the conclusions and, and we adopt the feasibility study, and yet we have to have further discussions about where we go from there.
Yes. So right now, are there any additional questions between now and next week? I'm sure as everyone reads this, there'll be more questions next week, but for now, is there anything else?
No, appreciate all your time and effort in doing this, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. You did a great job.
Thank you.
It was written, thank you.
Thanks for sticking through the whole meeting.
Yeah. You get to listen to all the fun stuff.
Thank you.
And with that, our next item is our closed session. Can I get a motion to go out of our city council meeting and into our closed session?
I would make a motion that we move out of our work meeting in city council, move into the closed session.
Second.
All right, we need a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Right, thank you.
Thank you all.